We'll get the meeting started. We are being broadcast live and digitally recorded, so please know that. And as always, we'll start with open sessions. Anybody here for open session? No, okay. All right. You wanna make some announcements there, Laurie?
Yep, so announcements, one's not on here, it was actually an old one, but I just wanted to thank anybody that came out with the brunch for Santa. I just saw the picture on here that he'll show. Um, I came out, I did see Chief there, I don't know if anybody else was there. Katie had done that event and it was a great event. Uh, they had arts, crafts, um, arts, crafts and, and food. You could go, they had about thirty something raffles that were donated. So that was just, it was a nice time.
Good turnout?
And she did well, yeah, very good turnout. Um, so much of a good turnout that she actually ran out of food because she was going based off the prior year. So they went out and they got more food to, to bring it back in.
Nice.
So that's always a good thing.
Got a nice spread in the Gardener News as well, which is.
I saw that today.
Yep, that is shared on the, um, town Facebook page as well. Um, Light Fight is going on, I don't know if anybody went and saw it this past weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's, if you didn't, it's going on next weekend as well, um, from five to eight. Some of the businesses do have specials, so keep an eye out for that. I know the, uh, Hub Town Diner had some and, and I don't remember who else off the top of my head. Um, and then CHOP, uh, the Community Holiday Outreach Program, that's what it stands for, is collecting unwrapped and unused toys for any age, boys and girls. Uh, if you don't wanna donate toys, you can donate money as well, checks payable made to CHOP. That money goes to help people in need, whether it be toys, um, you know, around this time of year, heat is hard for people if they don't have money. Um, so, you know, recently, last week, we did have a resident who ended up receiving a ton of pellets, um, because they had none and their house was cold. So, you know, that program does reach out for a lot of different things. So, um, you know, if you have extra, and I know it's a tough time of year for everybody, um, but they are accepting donations for that. Those can be dropped at the police station, um, cash or the check donations. And then there are drop boxes for toys at various locations throughout town.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm not, I'm impartial in the Light Fight, but I did wanna highlight the work of our staff, our town employees. This is the Hubbardston Fire Department's entry this year. Say you wanted to vote for the staff, you could do that online. But, uh, they went all out this year, so.
The music too?
It's music, it's.
That's, that's slightly disorienting.
Pretty serious.
Good job, guys.
Nice.
And I don't know, it, last year you guys did it, I don't know if it's something this year, the fire stations, they did the, um, donating, or not the, the, not the donating, the, um, voting online for the best fire station, is that something that is going on this year again?
Probably.
Okay. So keep an eye out for that, cause obviously they're, um, you know, stiff competition for the season, so.
All right, cool, um, all right, moving along, we've got the financial forecast presentation.
Actually.
First, we have.
The printed copy doesn't have.
Oh, okay.
Show Taylor.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, uh, we have Taylor Wilkinson here, she's the newest member of our Hubbardston Fire Department. Um, she wants to kill me because I'm making her here, but I wanna make her be here, but I wanted to introduce her to the board and the public. Um, from, from what I've been told by members of the staff, second to none in terms of medical skill, is a paramedic. Will be going to, uh, hopefully going to the Fire Academy in the summer. Might be news to you, but I'm trying to get you there. And, uh, just wanted to, uh, to thank her for joining the department, she is on duty right now, so we're gonna excuse her, she's, I'm sure she's happy about, but, uh, appreciate her service and just wanted, uh, everyone to say hello.
That's it. Hello.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, welcome to the, uh, the Fire Department. Um, I, I think, you know, I've been doing this for six years now or so. I don't think I've heard one negative thing ever about the Fire Department or the Police Department for that matter. So, you know, I, it sounds like you're gonna be adding a, a, a really, um, um, complimentary piece to our department, so welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to give a long speech, or?
Nope. Nope, that's it, I'm from the town and so I, I'm excited to be able to work out here with everybody, so.
Cool, welcome to the town.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, get outta here.
I mean, you could stay for the Hubbardston Financial Forecast if you'd like.
I already got.
It's a hard sound.
You probably don't like how it looks either, do you?
Yeah, it could always be worse, right?
Yeah.
Have a good night.
See ya.
See ya.
All right, so, um, as promised, wanted to give the board and the public a presentation of our financial forecasts. So this, uh, will be reviewed by the finance team, uh, this week. We had some scheduling, the department heads have seen, uh, pieces of this and it was presented to the finance committee. They can see it from the finance committee as, as well, so if you have any questions for, for what they went through last week, uh, he's here on behalf of the finance committee. So to get it going, what a financial forecast tool is, it's just a decision-making tool. It helps this board, the finance committee, myself and residents, uh, understand how decisions are being made. It's not an exact science, it's a model, so I'll go through some of the assumptions that were made. And, uh, this is something that should be presented prior to the budget and then updated when the budget's given, so you can see how current decisions are affecting the future. Here are some topic areas we'll go over. So methods, uh, what I did, the, the board had asked that I use, uh, the past as indicators for some of the assumptions I made. So I analyzed FY fifteen to twenty, uh, revenue and expenditure to come up with some trends. And then I got some guidance from the board and incom as well. Although that, these assumptions lie primarily on five-year averages, um, we did, I did have some changes to it in order to make a more realistic final, financial picture, so what we might know, for example, from revenue. And, uh, we've also, uh, have added some things to this forecast to try and help, um, to include, uh, an analysis of town reserves and debt management to, to help it. So the primary driver of our revenue growth is the two and a half percent, which is allowed by mass general law. So most of the money we get in town comes from, from taxes, and that is no surprise to everyone. New growth numbers, I have these projected at fifty thousand a year, that comes right from our assessing department. They believe that although that's on the conservative end of our growth number, it's the number we should use, um, in case growth isn't where we expect it to be. So this forecast also corrected some overestimating of, of local receipts, uh, what I believe is overestimating. So we were, um, going all the way up to, and we talked about this during our policy discussions, the actuals from the year prior and best practice usually has you, you would call back away from that. So to get to ninety percent is great, some towns do eighty, eighty-five, but you, you wanna build in a little conservatism with your local receipts, cause if they don't come in, you can't make that money up. So projecting with our new model of ninety-five percent.
What do you, um, the fifty thousand, you know, on the conservative scale, what would an aggressive number be? You know, just scaling eighty, something like that?
This year we were at eighty-nine.
Okay.
And we projected, I believe it's seventy-five.
Okay.
So, um, next year you might see a number like one-thirdie, but that's cause the solar is gonna be in there, that, that new growth. So that's, if you back the seventy thousand out of that, you're still gonna get into the sixty, seventy range.
Okay.
Um, if you were to say, what do you think the number would actually be, I'd probably put it closer to say seventy-five, but that's still not a lot of revenue, twenty-five thousand difference. So it's better to be conservative with your projections. Um, and they, these are all on the conservative side, I didn't go crazy with the conservatism. It's pretty easy for a town administrator to come in with doom and gloom and then say, hey, look how I fix things. Um, you do wanna be conservative, but I didn't go overboard with that, um, trying to make it as accurate as possible. So here are the FY twenty revenue projections that we have. If you notice, this total is, uh, just a little bit more than our budget number last year. So if we had no growth, um, at all, or if, we'd be fine with this revenue number, but we do have some contractual obligated growth, uh, we expect the schools to grow, et cetera, so our revenues are low. Here are some assumptions I made on that, the tax levy is two and a half percent, that's set by law. Uh, local receipts, it gives a one percent growth rate per year, which is pretty consistent with what we've seen, again, on the conservative side. State aid has been better recently, but, uh, as little as ten years ago, it was on the negative side. So two percent growth is, is a good ten-year, five to ten-year average for what state aid would be. Uh, I, I talk here again about the projection of local receipts, trying to, to keep that at, at ninety-five percent of the prior year's actuals. It gives us a little room in case numbers don't come in and it also allows us to generate just a little bit of free cash, which gives the budget some stability and was part of our financial policy.
That's just one question about the previous slide.
Yeah.
Um, so let's just say, and I'm not looking for exact numbers here, but, you know, the taxes are what they are there. But let's just say the state aid and local receipts, you know, aren't one and two percent, if they're three to five percent or whatnot. That's still not that much more money, right?
Right, it's not.
Okay.
So it's still gonna require cuts.
Yep.
Or, um, a more aggressive projection of revenue, of, of local receipts is another way you can fill it. Or, um, as has been done recently, influx of some free cash into the budget. So here's the forecast over five years for, for revenue. Again, this is, this is just a model, so just showing you, uh, essentially a, a two to three, three percent growth, which is driven primarily by the taxes. To put this into context, that FY twenty twenty-four number under local receipts, the one point three, three million is what we estimated revenues to be last year. And so, um, this is a, a backing off of that, that number. And we're trying to do it over a phased five-year approach, so that we don't cripple the budget.
Sorry, just one other thi- sorry, one other thing. But so to go from two thousand twenty to twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-three to twenty-four on the taxes, that's a two and a half percent increase each year?
Yeah.
Cause that doesn't count to that. Seven one eight five times one point oh two five is seven three six four.
I'll have to check the numbers then.
Okay.
Go back. What is, out of curiosity, do seven one eight five, do that number.
Yep.
Divided by point nine seven five. To get a true percentage, you usually do the reciprocal, see if it comes out.
Divided by point.
Point nine seven five. See what that number is.
Same one I got, seven three si- yeah.
Same one you got?
I got it.
Oh, okay. Interesting, okay.
Again, here's, there's property tax increase and I'll, I'll check the model numbers to make sure.
Or, or, well, hold on one second, does that also account for new growth in taxes?
Um, yes, it does.
Oh.
So that's the, that's the difference, I apologize.
Okay.
You s- you shocked me a little bit there, so that includes a fifty thousand new growth estimate plus the.
All right, so what, what was the number again?
Seven, it was, uh, I don't know.
Seven three six nine.
Yeah, seven three six nine plus fifteen, seven four one ish.
Yeah, so that's it, okay.
Ish.
Okay. New growth.
Sorry about that, my spreadsheet world just came crashing down, so.
No, that's fine, you're good, it worked.
Uh, local receipts, again, this shows a one percent increase in state aid. So again, local receipts and state aid, we're hoping, um, state aid comes in higher, we always do, and, and lobby for that to happen. In terms of local receipts, we did add to our fire department this year, we should be getting more ambulance revenue, uh, from being open more hours and, um, been more aggressive with, uh, things like tax collection and fees and, and all those things. So although it's not gonna be a huge driver, we're hoping it is above the, the one percent we have projected here, uh, which would allow the numbers to look a little bit better, so not all doom and gloom. On the expenditure side, in this model, education makes six, makes up sixty percent of the budget and, uh, is the primary driver of growth. Those numbers are estimated at five percent for the Quabbin School and Monty Tech at three percent. Um, so last year, Quabbin came in at three and a half percent, so again, we'd like to see that number again. Uh, that would drive some of these numbers way down, since that's sixty percent of our budget.
And that's probably the lowest it's been in a decade.
Yeah.
So five percent is on the higher end of, or more conservative end of, of the five-year average. Um, so while level funding the budgets is, is what we've been trying to do to control measures, um, our expenditures are not, I'm just to tell you, they're not crazy. So even if you were to lim, level fund services, you're not talking about a huge change in the, uh, the budget deficit. Again, regionalization and grant efforts, we continue to create efficiencies, we've, we've made some, some good headway with that this year. But, uh, these expenditures do also grow, uh, so we can gain some initial headway into that deficit. But eventually, um, those bills come due. And this model doesn't necessarily account for necessary changes to long-term planning like snow and ice budgeting, which is a problem in every community, uh, FinCom Reserve, where we would like to put that at, and wage parity, uh, paying our employees on, on par with our peers. So here is the projection, expenditure projection for FY twenty twenty. And here are some of the assumptions, uh, that we use in that. So salaries would grow at, at two and a half percent, uh, Quabbin at five percent, Monty Tech at three, health insurance and retirement have been pretty steady at nine percent, insurance at eight. Expenses, it shows expenses growth at two percent, even though we did ask for, um, level funded budgets this year, we did build in a little bit of room, uh, for those types of requests. And then contractual increases in police, fire and DPW are between two and three percent. This is just a breakdown by expenditure category. So then we get into the budget deficit summary, so, um, revenues and expenditures determine the ability to deliver services. The forecast continues to demonstrate that we do have a structural imbalance between the current available revenue and the cost of providing these services. So in this model, that's estimating this year a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deficit and as much as a million dollars in two thousand twenty-four. So here's what that looks like in graph form. So blue, uh, revenue, red expenditure, and then the green, uh, negative shows the deficit. Capital planning, so in, if we had a finished capital plan, which, um, I have an update for you on that. Before, we're progressing, we're gonna hit that January timeframe, but this is where we would include the capital plan in our five-year projections to give the, this budget analysis and forecast more robustness. Um, but right now, we're still, still building that plan, so it's not in here. And then debt, so debt, um, can seem like a negative word to some, but it, it is also a positive part of the budget. It allows us to fund things that we, we couldn't pay for, say, just in cash. So if you think about your home budget, your car, your, your mortgage, maybe those things, most people can't pay for them cash and towns are very similar, so you need to have some debt. So our current policy sets the debt target at two to five percent of the operating budget, so that's having good debt in order to fund projects. Uh, we're trying to keep that at three by policy, three percent total. So here, um, is just a little bit of good news. So our, our debt service i- is increasing over, up until two thousand twenty-three, and that's primarily because of the addition of the fire truck and the dump truck from two years ago. Uh, we added that debt service onto the budget this year, and you'll see it as part of this year's budget. But all of our debt falls off by two thousand twenty-four, except for the, the one I just talked about, the fire truck and the, um, the dump truck. So we have a lot of capacity in our debt service budget in the next five years. So projects typically, even the fire truck, it took two years for that to hit our books, so to speak, to pay for it. Uh, if we were to do a building, it might be two or three years it takes to actually pay that debt off for the money you borrowed. So, um, if we did want to do something with that, we have capacity to do so. And that could be funding a capital plan, it could be, uh, financing part of a building project, um, it, it could be, uh, reducing the debt service, if that's what everybody wants to do. But that capacity, uh, will exist in two thousand twenty-four, uh, from its current level to almost nothing. And then reserves, I talk a lot about reserves, but while it's not part of the operating budget, it's an important part of the financial picture. So our policy targets, uh, as we've talked about the last couple of meetings, stabilization's five percent, capital stabilization one percent, free cash at five percent generation for a total reserve of eleven percent, which is right on target with Department of Local Services best practices.
So you were saying that th- these are our actuals or our policy targets?
That's our targets. So our current stabilization, remember we wanted to be at five percent, our current reserve is three point four six based off this budget forecast. So say we backed away on expenditures, we'd be a little bit higher, but still under four percent. Uh, so it's on the lower end, but we are in, on the positive side of Department of Revenue recommendations, we're in the window. Municipal stabilization fund is higher than recommended levels, so why you'd wanna have something in your municipal stabilization is if your free cash fell short in the coming years, you'd still be able to pay for your capital plan, at least a piece of it. But we have extra, I put that in quotes, in that stabilization fund, about seventy thousand right now that could help, uh, fund capital plan or if, if there's something we wanted to do. Uh, we should try and keep one percent in there, but it's over. So, uh, you do wanna build up a little bit of capacity in that fund for years where, uh, free cash numbers fall short. And then for the free cash targets, so this is talking a little bit about the, the revenue and estimating and being conservative. Uh, you don't wanna over-generate free cash, cause that's, that's not fair to the taxpayer. But you do wanna develop a little bit of free cash in order to have some flexible reserves to finance your, your capital plan and to, of course, cover for, for rainy days or, or for bad days. So in order to generate free cash, you need to do it two ways. One, you need to over-produce on the revenue side or, um, under-produce on the expenditure side. So since we're such a tight budget in terms of expenditure, it's really important that we focus on the revenue side if we're gonna generate any free cash.
What was our free cash last year?
Last year it was at, uh, four ninety-five certified going into town meeting, which is about five percent. A lot of that was free cash that was transferred over from the year prior, though. So, um, not a lot was generated last year, almost nothing.
That's kinda what I meant, actually. I'd, I'd worded it incorrectly, but last year's free cash added.
What we generated?
Yeah.
It's pretty close to zero.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's a, a trend over the last few years. So this is the, a picture of the current reserves, so stabilization's at three twenty-four, eight thirty. If you use the FY expenditure numbers for the operating budget, we wanna be at forty, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which gives a deficit of about a hundred and forty-four thousand. So you could use free cash this year and make that hole at five percent, if that's what the town wanted to do. Or you could say, do that over five years, say we're gonna make a commitment to put it, money away each year at this level, uh, from that free cash that you hopefully generate. Capital stabilization is a, was a little off, it's, we have a sixty-two thousand dollar excess over our policy. You'll see the free cash target numbers, it's where you wanna be if we're generating five percent. Don't wanna over-generate, but it would be good to hit about that number. Um, and then total reserves is down at the bottom of how much you would have in savings. So some recommendations, uh, would like to continue to improve relations with the Quabbin Regional School District. So that doesn't mean going there and saying, you know, you, you charge us too much, it's going and showing them. So I'm meeting with them on Thursday at the, at the school committee meeting. I'll be presenting these findings to them and talking about capital planning with them, uh, just so as they go into their budget season, they know where we're at and, and what that impact would have on us. Um, it, I think it's an important part of their decision-making process. When I continue to develop this transparent budget process, so present these numbers in these contexts and these decision-making tools to allow, uh, this board to make its decisions. Continue to explore ways to reduce the budget deficit, um, so that's regionalization, reducing the budget where we can and, um, just presenting, perhaps presenting a well-defined operational override to the town at some point, um, cause this deficit isn't gonna go away, it's gonna be something that we face, uh, every year.
When, when are you on the agenda, do you know? Like, or what stage of the agenda are you?
We just talked about it today.
Okay.
I'm not sure yet. Hopefully in the beginning.
Yeah.
And then, uh, would like to continue to recommend to tie all budget decisions to forecast plans and policies. It, um, helps shape decisions and put things in context and, and builds that credibility, allows the, our credit ratings to stay high. So in summary, expenditures are growing faster than revenues, which I'm sure every one of you's heard, every year you've sat here. Um, and I hear it at every meeting I go to and every town is telling their boards the same exact thing. Um, so it creates this unsustainable structural deficit that, that's just part of our life and we deal with it. Um, but at some point, it's gonna need to be addressed in this town. Or the decision's gonna have to be made to, to cut service levels, which is what some towns do as well. So to continue to operate the way we are, um, there will need to be a fix at some point or a decision to back down a little bit. While we continue to explore budget cuts, there's, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of room for future cuts short of taking away personnel or, uh, taking away service levels. So adding a firefighter this year allows us some revenue growth and allows that service expansion that residents like, but it comes, it comes with a cost, so you can reduce that down if you want as well. Um, that's another way to solve the deficit. And then defining policies, like making sure you use, uh, this forecast and decision-making tools like benchmarking, allows us to prioritize the decisions, um, and put things again into context. And then to avoid extensive cuts in twenty, we're gonna have to have a limited growth budget, which is what I presented to the, the department heads and will present to the school and will present, already presented to the finance committee and will, will also present to the finance team, so everybody knows what we're facing. So in summary, uh, the department heads were not surprised by any of this. Said, one of the comments was, this, we've seen this before, this is what these tend to look like, but, um, I, I do believe that this is an accurate representation of the, the current standing of the town. Do I see a path to a balanced budget without drastic cuts? Yes, but some things will have to fall our way in terms of, um, some assessments would have to come in lower than we expect. And, um, state aid would have to come in at the right number. And, um, some of the realizations we've made in, in budget cuts would have to, would have to take effect.
And, uh, Senator Goby, uh, at our joint, uh, select board meeting last Thursday in New Braintree, um, talked about some of that, uh, from the school's standpoint, of how we, we got some good news this year a couple of times that was able to save for regional transportation and other stuff. So, y- you know, not just, uh, relative to the town, but to the school, um, you know, and, and all that information comes so late in the game, you know, it's, it's tough to predict.
It is, so, just to kind of put that, like a picture on it, so last year's, so we used the budget number that we, that we went to town meeting with in order to do this. So we cut that bu- number by twenty-three thousand, let's say, because the transportation money came in. So twenty-three thousand plus five percent is in this model. So I know we have approximately twenty-eight thousand that'll be out of that deficit, which doesn't save us, but it lowers it. So you can see how we'll get there, right? So it's not all doom and gloom, but the, the main point is that, that you can't shrink that down to nothing, it's gonna be impossible. And we used free cash the last few years and we shouldn't do that. So we're not gonna be able this year to not recommend using some free cash if we wanna keep our service levels. Hopefully we can cut that in half or even lower.
Yeah.
But there's no way to make the gap up.
Uh, so you know, you're last on their agenda, I just called it up. On a two-page agenda.
But how, how is any town, I mean, obviously we're not the only town facing this. How is any town, uh, you survive when you have school increases of five percent, seven percent? Um, I mean, that's just, you're just robbing Peter to pay Paul. So how is, how are towns dealing with that around central and western Mass? I mean, where there isn't a lot of revenue from business and industry and, I mean, once you start making it west of one ninety here.
Um, a, a few ways, you, you can rob your reserves to try and to make that gap up. Um, you can pass over ads and, and increase taxes or, or cut. Some people choose the cut route or to keep their town government as small as possible, which has a cyclical effect. If you keep small, then you don't grow either, and so eventually you face that problem again and again and again. Yeah, it's the, if I can figure that out, I'll have a good gig as a consultant. But the, uh, the key is to, to be realistic about, about the growth of the schools and to try and plan for the future, uh, and to present this information to the public and say, this is a true picture, this is what it looks like. What, what do you want to do? Um, and some towns choose to cut and some towns choose to increase. But, uh, I'm not suggesting this, so I don't want this to be a thing, but a three hundred thousand dollar operational override to, to cut that deficit wouldn't solve this town's problem for but five, ten years. Um, but you're talking about a, you know, fifteen to twenty dollar a month increase in, in taxes. Um, so that's the decision you have to make, it's not short money, you know, it's three, four hundred dollars a year, which is a lot for the average taxpayer. Do you, do you want to cut your services or do you wanna pay that as a decision a lot of towns have to make? Some, some raise the taxes up and they continue the services and some don't.
So to, to answer your question a little bit differently, you know, the reason that we started the task force, Q E M P, four years ago, was because we said we wanna plan, a five-year plan from the schools, and they said we can't do that. So the five towns got together, sent that joint letter, and we spent a hundred and seventy thousand dollars over the last three or four years in grant money that was, you know, funded by the state to analyze what can be done from that big piece. And what it's turned into is phase one of what we're going through now with a potential school closure. Cause that was the way in New, New Braintree, that was the way or one of the options that, because there are no real answers within the municipal side of things, and because sixty percent of it is coming from the schools as far as where, where all of our costs are, are, this is the way that they set, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing and, and don't quote me, but this is essentially the way they said they could help. You know, and in their, you know, their own analyses of their own operations, you know, Colin Center got into the whole financials of everything the way it operates and people can have different opinions on what money should be spent on, but their response was in collaboration with the task force to start investigating those options. So, you know, whatever that's worth.
And the reason they wanted to, to close the school was cause they wanted to put them all in New Braintree, so they felt the kids would get a better education and they can't lease out.
In Oak Camp, put them in, oh.
Yeah, move them all to Oak Camp.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, uh, but they can't do that without closing the school.
Correct.
If they ha- if they could make an, if they could sublet the school, like they do over here to the CAPS program. They wouldn't have to shut the school down, but they may be able to negotiate an agreement with the Board of Selectmen in the Braintree to let them sublet the school. Then they won't have to close the school.
And they've reached out to me about that, cause we have that type of lease, so they're looking at all that stuff.
Okay, anyone have anything else for Ryan here on the financial forecast? Okay, thanks for putting that together. Okay, so we've got uh.
So license renewals, but I don't know if you wanna move up the fair first parish, yeah, is that what you're gonna say?
Sure.
Staying, unless you're more more than welcome to stay.
Okay, you wanna uh give us an update?
Uh yes, so.
Wanna come on up or you wanna stay right there?
I'm I'm just observing right now. All the work's been done.
Yes, so we um we we had good news, so one of one of our last meetings. Um we found out that the bond council wasn't gonna support borrowing for the for the church. Because of the acting case and and all of the stuff that went with that, um and I won't rehash all of all of that history. But the the church officials came to us and said uh that they were able to find some uh private financing. In order to make up the gap between the uh reserve expenditure, which is thirty-eight thousand three hundred and ten dollars. And the total appropriation, which is somewhere around seventy-two thousand. Uh they were able to finance the difference and get the project done, and you remember the project had come in under what they thought it would be. So they asked that we um honor the town vote and allow them to use the reserve fund from the CPC, which I I believe the board had supported. Uh so we checked with legal counsel. Uh we uh were speaking with the CPC officials. And we came up with a a new grant grant agreement that um town council approved, accounting approved. Uh so essentially what we'd be doing is approving the grants to give the reserve part of that, reserve transfer part of that money. From CPC to the church in order to accomplish their project. So not the best-case scenario, not originally what the town had voted to do. Uh we wish we could do more, but allows them to get their project done, get that roof on, especially before uh the winter gets too bad and there's more damage done there. So we've uh the church has signed this agreement, the CPC has signed the agreement, which accounting asked us to do. So if the board is willing to approve uh this grant agreement, which is in your packet, and sign it tonight, then it'll be done. We have already started, just in case the board wanted to do this, the check process, so. If the board approves, then that would be delivered this week to allow them to accomplish the project.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the CPA grant agreement with the town of Hubbardston and the First Parish Unitarian Church.
Second motion.
Um just a point of discussion, so is is there anything else planned in the future at a future town meeting for this?
Uh not at this time, no. So we wouldn't be able to say do the rest of the borrowing, um and we'd have to check with town council in terms of retroactively doing it, I've never heard of that.
Okay, uh any further discussion?
Uh yeah, just a little history on the church, it says here that the uh building is featured in, inspired by, or otherwise linked to the nursery rhyme, Old Mother Hubbard.
Oh Hubbardson, Hubbard.
Thanks, Jamie. Anything further?
Town council vetted that too.
Okay, uh on favor?
You have line.
Okay, license renewals?
License renewals, so those were passed around before, um just prior to the meeting, because there's so many of them, so you all could see them. There are twenty-three licenses in town, um they include class one auto dealers, class two auto dealers. We have clubs, common vicular, amusement, um alcohol, like I said, on premises, off premises, Sunday sales of alcohol. Um and and on, so uh they're made up into, some businesses have multiple licenses where they could have a common vicular, a um. Liquor and they could have amusement, so some of the places do have multiple ones. Uh these all go to the state, so they they go through the state and then the town has its own fees. So there is a list of them, I can go through the list real fast, um and then you could make a motion to approve them. They have been signed off by Rich before he left, they have also been signed off um by the fire chief if needed. And the town clerk, or the uh tax collector, sorry, to make sure that no taxes are owed.
So can we approve all, can we approve all of them by one motion or do we have to do each one?
Last year you did them all by one motion, um if somebody, if you want me to read through them and just say what they are, and then they can approve unless somebody else wants to do that.
No, you could do it.
Yeah, thank you. So uh Sterling Molden Machine, they have a class one auto dealer license. Hubbardson Rod and Gun, they have an amusement, a common vicular and a club, all alcohol. Triple A Today license has class two auto dealer. Nettishin Home has a lodging home, Peaceful Acres has common vicular, general on-premises club, which includes wine and malt. Uh Pizza Palace, they are nickel ink DBA Pizza Palace of wine and malt restaurant, common vicular, amusement uh devices. Then Ladybug Farm is common vicular, the hub of the hub is off-premises, wine and malt. Kent Brothers Sales and Service, class two auto dealer. Uh Hanny, I'm gonna mess his name up, but I'm sorry, uh Tatros, is it, okay. Uh Doing Business as Hubbardston Market has a common vicular, all alcohol package store license, Sunday sales of alcohol. Hubbardson One Stop Shop has all alcohol, Sunday sales of alcohol, common vicular. Rieta Ranch has common vicular, all alcohol restaurant, and finally, the Hub Town Diner has common vicular.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the licenses as submitted.
Second motion.
Discussion, on favor? Okay, um and this was your uh your class last week, right?
It partially is.
Okay, so take it away.
So I was at procurement class last week, it was it was great, so um. I I believe we need a a strong procurement policy. Uh we follow all the procurement rules, uh we were audited for our procurement, and I was sitting in the class thinking, we do a decent job with procurement, so. Um what's missing is policy, delegation, and then cross-training of um employees, new employees, et cetera. So this would be part of a sustainment initiative. Um if a new town administrator comes in or um new department heads, they would fall in on this policy and understand uh how Hubbardston operates in terms of procurement. So it's a very long policy, I'm still adding some uh checklists and other things to it. But I wanted to give it to you um in advance of our next meeting where I'd be asking you to approve it, so you'd have some time to to read it and sift through it. Rather than try and do it all uh tonight.
Sounds good. We shall.
Procurement is exciting. I did say that, no I didn't.
Uh and uh the last item under new business, we have initial benchmark town discussion?
Yes, so we talked last meeting about uh benchmarking. We were been working pretty heavy with the finance committee about this idea of benchmarking, they tossed this around for over an hour at their meeting. And what they came up with, uh and the board seemed pretty excited about it, so wanted to continue that momentum. They came up with, they're gonna come up with a list of fifteen towns and send it to this board and to the planning board. Uh to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of our our peer towns. And they were also co- having conversations about aspirational towns as well, so you don't just want what we're like, but also what we wanna be like. Uh which can be a more difficult discussion. So I'm gonna, it's in your packet, I'm just gonna project this up as well. So this came from accounting. So if you ask the numbers people, um how we should compare ourselves, they say you should compare yourselves to everyone who's like you in terms of finances, so. This is the list, if you were to put in um by population, tax bill, per capita income, EQV. And then some characteristics like um how much you spend in your budget, et cetera. This is who they say our peers are.
Who's they?
Uh accounting.
Accounting, our accounting.
So I said, what who do you think our peers are, this is this is who they gave us.
So you know, like Dunstable and and Princeton, just looking at per capita, they they they're pretty significantly different than the rest of those towns there. You're right, so I mean, it's, yeah.
So um I'm gonna show you another version, this this came uh from the finance committee who empowered Josh Lerner, if you remember, he gave that great presentation. And is extremely good at this. So this comes from the finance committees, trying to make it bigger. Their initial discussion of our fifteen peers that they'd like to send to you, so um the reason why some of those towns like Princeton and Dunstable. Um are in these conversations is they they may be aspirational towns in terms of um budget size, growth, town makeup, et cetera. And then uh some of our peers and as well as some people that, you know, they might see Hubbardston as an aspirational town, just to give a nice mix. Uh in terms of your benchmarking, so these are the fifteen towns that they came up with. Uh primaries primarily focusing on um like population, but they really honed in on EQV. Which is um all things equal, this is how much your land is worth um per capita. For assessment value, so that kinda gives you a nice um picture of of where you're at compared to compared to other towns.
You have the slide that showed what what each town had for for free cash or stabilization?
Yes, so that is um part of a bigger spreadsheet if you want.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I I s- I saw it, I don't see it on what I have in front of me here, but I don't know if you had that in front of you. It's an interesting one to look at.
So that's what we would do with benchmarking, is when we have a discussion about free cash, and I tell you, we should be at five percent. I would bring up all of our predetermined benchmark towns and show you where they're at. Um which can say, you know, you're crazy, these towns don't even have anything close to what we have, why are we putting so much money into that? Or vice versa, like we really need to catch up. You know, this spreadsheet also breaks it down, this is how much you spend on public safety, this is how much.
Do we have this?
It is in, it's the spreadsheet in there. So this is, this is the one from accounting. And it has assessed values by class, so you can see, you know, who we're like in terms of commercial, industrial. Their revenue numbers as comparison to ours. Just wanna real quick remember who we are. I'm just in, we're line eight. It's over there. It's not letting me do that. And then uh tax levies by class, tax rates. Which will be, you know, an interesting discussion. And then outstanding receivables. This is what you're talking about, general fund expenditures and other financial indicators.
It I just the stark difference in the stabilization fund, I think of that, is that Dunstable with eight point five million? Then that's, oh it was Irving, I think. I don't know, who was the fourth one down, I don't know.
There's a lot of similarities in all these, not just absolutely. Yeah, it was Irving.
Which is crazy, they have like thirteen hundred people in town.
They eight eight, for real, eight million dollars?
Eight point five million, yeah.
Seventeen hundred people.
Uh so we would break this down for you, how much is in their stabilization, free cash, it's again, look at their, I mean, free cash number is crazy, um.
I've always thought they've got some like magical benefactor, cause they don't have, I mean, they 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 got their own senior center, they built it themselves, they paid for it and they built it themselves, you know.
Are you talking about Irving?
Yeah.
Paper mill. Yeah.
Yeah, you drive through there.
Westminster, for example, is a very robust finance reserves, but a lot of it comes from their landfill, so um. So things like that are good to know, so when you're talking to town and you're saying, you know. If the town residents said, we wanna look like X, and be like, well, they have this type of reserves because they have this influx of cash, maybe we have more solar than other people. So benchmarking is is useful, just like forecasting, in this way, that it's not gonna fix your problems, but it's gonna help put them in context so you can make decisions. So I'm showing you this. So you have this one, which is the. One from accounting. Um we can pull that data pretty easily, it took them two minutes to get that. And then this is the one from the finance committee, so these are the towns, they went through a bunch of different indicators. Everything from we'd like to have their type of school to um. These tax rates to, and definitely size, so they didn't wanna do anything that was more than, say, two or three X of something. Comparing ourselves to a budget of twenty-five million is is probably not that um in- interesting, cause we're just si- not similar in the types of towns.
Ryan, EQV per capita, what's that again?
It's equalized value. Uh so it takes, it takes assessment values and then takes per capita income. And creates a metric that is more evenly distributed, so instead of saying comparing yourself to a town that is really affluent. Right, makes all towns the same and then says where you fit into that picture. So um i- it's interesting to see some of the towns. In terms of EQV, and that's where Josh is, when he.
Because like the income per capita, like compared Hubbardston to Princeton, we're thirty-one thousand and fifty thousand, then you go to EQV, it goes from ninety thousand. And then up to a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, so that would mean they're more like us than say Great Barrington, um but not as close as say Berry. Which, some of those are no brainers, you'd say, of course, but um. There's also a geographic distance here that matters, so we're very similar to um. To to Great Barrington, Lee and Lennox in some ways, but they're also, you know, almost in New York, so. It just matters to look at, so what we'd like to do with these bench- benchmark numbers is, the finance committee's gonna continue to give their recommendations. Would love to get from the select board, and we'll do this at a future meeting if it's what you want, but a red line or a yes. You know, this is a town that I'd like to compare us to, or this one doesn't make sense at all. And then do the same thing with the planning board because of zoning considerations and and um other things. And then come to a consensus with all the boards on, okay, these are our ten towns, or twelve if we wanna do it that way, or eight. So it'd be really saying, let's look at this list, why isn't this town on here and and this town, no way, you know, we're not Princeton, we never will be. Conversations along those lines.
Yep, that sounds like it works well, exercise?
So this is just that initial, showing it to you, gave you the data, and then um. Talk with Dan, but get it on the agenda, either the next meeting or somewhere before the budget. So that way, when we do the budget presentation, we can kinda give you a little glimpse at your our peers, so you can understand where they're at. And I would definitely use that in in something like a for- financial forecast.
Okay, that it for that?
It is.
Alright, uh we have old business on the agenda next, is there anything uh that you wanna bring up during this, or anybody else I guess wants to bring up during our business? No, I don't, okay, so I guess you're up for the uh town administrator report next.
Alright, so I I had the pleasure of attending the uh town tree and menorah lighting ceremony last week. Uh came for the caroling with the swinging seniors, uh there was, there had to have been seventy-five, a hundred people packed into the senior center and then. Um the the town town common had even more people, um just super impressive, the amount of work that went into it. Uh council and aging, the town center committee, special events, public works, police and parks, all played uh played a part, to include the Hubbardson Lions. Uh just a great event and um was happy to take take part in it.
It's getting so much more organized and 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 bigger, well, I remember the fir- the. This was the first year where actually all parties were copied on all the emails, so could in previous years, it was just sort of scattered by, okay, who's getting that, oh, we need extension cord, so. It just felt like it's, you know, evolving a little bit more too, and now that, you know, Katie's involved too, then and it's just gonna be a lot brighter.
Yeah, and she did wanna know if she's, if you need more lights, so if you want more lights, she's going to get them after.
The holidays.
She's a good sales shopper.
Oh yeah, yeah, she's mentioned that.
But in in all seriousness, reach out to her, if you s- you know, this could use lighting, or we'd like to see this in the common, uh she's looking for that feedback from the board. Uh but yeah, I wanted to steal it and bring it to my town as well, I just, you think of the four, five-year-olds that that they're like, oh, this is what Hubbardson does, they like their tree. Their tree and their common, you know, twenty years from now would be pretty cool, say, oh, we've always done this, right, and we know it's not true.
And again, I know you have it on here, but the Lions Club, if if you recall it, like our last meeting or a couple meetings ago. When you had spoken to them about the fact that they winterized their brand-new thing, I didn't know until this, that morning, that they were gonna bring the concession stand, whatever you wanna call it, out there, so.
The ticket booth had put a, put a big part into building.
Appreciate it, so.
Worked out good, yeah. Yeah, I didn't plan well for um the cold, so the cider saved.
It was cold.
I was pretending it was good, but it was really just keeping my hands warm, so the um was both. So a budget update, uh met with the staff uh at our quarterly staff meeting. And talked about the FY twenty budget requests, showed them the financial forecast, uh just to get everyone on the same page, we expect to get all those requests, I've already received a few. But by December twentieth, to include reaching out to the boards and committees that have budget controls. Um to get those in, so we can start meeting with departments in January to give you a a good town administrator's budget in early February. Capital plan, I have the first draft of the the capital plan, I've sent back comments, uh asked them to look at a few things, like our our debt expenditures, et cetera. Still very much on schedule, they're expecting to get this final draft to me and present to this board uh in January, whether it's at our first or second meeting. Um I'm just really impressed with their, how much time they put into it for the for the level of the grant, I think it's gonna be good. Also should start thinking about capital improvement committee, um appointments, people. Also should start thinking about capital improvement committee, um appointments, people who might be good for something like that, it'd be good to keep momentum going. For um having this, having a committee look at this and and update our capital plan every year, just another voice, another decision-making tool for town meeting. So the department and all board reports. So this is um this month's all board report, for for those who haven't seen it. It's uh, we do two, every two months to lessen the load on on our volunteers, but um. Our boards have submitted what they've been working on for the last couple months, some of their highlights as they see it. Just really good information tool for the public.
A lot of information too, I mean, people are taking it seriously.
Yeah, the open space committee is well-written, I don't know if it's that, but. Uh they put in some good effort there, it's impressive. Um got a couple new boards to come on and and write, to include the the planning board and the board of assessors. Um board of health, CONCOM, and the finance committee. So that is uh something we put out to the public, it's available online, of course, uh print and mail it if anybody wants it, but um. Good information tool for the public, and in the same sense, the. All department reports, so this, our staff does this every month, uh we have every department now reporting, and it's the same. It's a little trouble loading here, but it is the same uh type of information, just at department level. This is a good picture of the the new lean-to, so the Monty Tech students made this for the Department of Public Works and all this, the three-in-one sand is under there. So that allows the uh the salt not to leach out of it, and uh allows us to save some money there. Plus we'd engage the students, which was pretty cool. The library's always.
So what do, I can't remember, did we, we paid for materials?
Just materials. And they're, they're coming to look to fix some of our walkways and and other things here, so we're trying to engage those students where we can, it's good for them and it's good for us, obviously. So just a good report from uh from each department, for people who are interested in that, that is on the website, and we put it out on social media.
Do you think it's, just what we were talking about here, do you think it's worth doing that one monthly, or does it make more sense to do that one every two months?
Departments month, should be monthly. We have enough to do and and to talk about in each department, and the department heads are good, if they, we don't have anything, we just don't include them that month, but. It seems to be working, it doesn't seem to be taking a lot of staff time. And then just wanted to show on my homepage. Have a tab here on the left called reports and information, so all of our department reports are here. All the board reports, uh the annual reports, all these presentations I've been giving to the board are here. For people who wanna review them, and then long-term plans, we've pulled these from from the past and and stuff we're currently working on. Just for people to to see what their government's doing and and what our plans are, so they can help us. We get the question a lot, where can I find more information? That's one spot. In terms of professional development, I completed my second MCPPO class, it was, it was thrilling, three days. I haven't found out if I passed the test yet, but I'll let you know, you get to take it again if I didn't.
Online?
Uh no, it's in person, Proctored, and this uh is focused on design and construction services for public buildings and public works. Which will help me with uh uh help assisting Travis with chapter ninety, and the bridge projects we have going on. Um for for sure, and then design services, uh it's already helped me working with the library roof project. Uh so this is good, I'll be doing one more supplies and service contracting, then I'll have the full procurement certificate, which was my professional development goal. I also had the staff, been coming to me and and engaging in professional development, taking Excel classes or other things to try and advance themselves, we've been encouraging them to do that. Uh employee recognition, so I have a couple for you, uh I'd like to recognize, he was supposed to be here tonight, but he had an engagement. Our building inspector, Rich Bragie, for his services during the last calendar year, uh we were looking for a couple month fix. But he really helped us bridge the gap between Larry and our new relationship with Gardner. Uh he was here for almost nine months, really stead of the office and increased inspections during his time, he's pretty proactive. Um also like to thank him just for a lifetime of government service, to include his service in Vietnam and other other communities. Uh also in terms of recognition, our police department. Uh Detective Chatney and Sergeant Fort responded to a a welfare call, they were able to identify someone who was in need. And then engaged the the CHOP. This winter assistance to get almost a ton of pellets, Lori was involved with this to try and uh help a resident who needed some assistance. So able to bring some wood pellets so they could heat their home, um something we don't like to think about during the holidays, but is important. I was really impressed that they they took the initiative there to follow up on a call and then go that extra mile, so. So I really appreciate them taking care of our residents, um sad that anyone needs it, but when they do, it's good to know, we can help them. And then some topics that are upcoming, I still owe you military leave policy, wish it wasn't as hard as it is, but it is. Five-year capital plan, that'll be next month, updated road maintenance plan, Travis and I have been working pretty heavily on this.
For the uh the five-year capital plan, are are you doing it solo, or is Collins Center coming in, or how's that working?
I've, we've been work, they asked me, um I guess I can ask you, would you prefer, uh I don't mind them giving the presentation on their work. But they're, they are willing to come and do it.
It's up to you.
Uh I think it's good to have that third voice. The Travis and I have been working on the road maintenance plan, trying to push it out three, four years and give some alternatives, uh just beef up last year's presentation and. Uh still planning on having that public hearing, probably in January. And uh been updating human resource policy, and um Lori's been heavily engaged in that as well, and then the budget presentation will be in February. February fourth, I believe.
Ryan, do you have an update on the strap grant?
Yes, so we did not get the strap grant this year, um it was a really competitive process, I guess, um I was, just be honest, blunt, I was bummed.
Yeah.
I immediately engaged our legislative officials and then sent a response to the state, um just detailing how important that grant was for us.
That was earmarked for Flag Road, Mount Jeff and all that.
Yes, so we have um already reached out to some of those residents and and come up with a, coming up with a plan, we are gonna put that in again. Um next year, I've asked for feedback, I've also asked for some engineering firms to look at what we put in, to make sure. We don't think it was us, obviously, but um it could just be how competitive it was, but if it is, we'll fix that and make sure we get it, so we don't want that to be an impediment. They might also say that that project isn't good for strap grants, we might shift it, but we want that feedback. Uh but I'm hearing that from, did, not a lot of them went through this year, so um I don't know why, I know Senator Goby was gonna look into it. Trying to get some information back to us on that, but. Yeah, not good news.
Alright, thank you for the report. So we're on to some appointments, we've got Katie Young for Economic Development Committee.
Yep, so Economic Development Committee has been actually working, Todd Miller has been working on that, um he came in.
What's the status with that, I mean, have they had meetings or?
So they, so uh Todd has come in and met with um Katie and and Whitney, um I had talked to actually Todd as well, to let him know their work. Current members on the board that have been appointed, um there are three on there right now, Tom Larson, Tom Collier and um Rick Green.
Have they notified any of those members that?
Uh we have no, I had advised him to notify them, I had advised Katie that they were also on the board. Um you know, because like I said, they were prior existing members, um so Katie has put in an application, there are some openings on it as well. Um I did let her know that currently there's, I think, three or four openings on the board. Um off, this is going back to last week, so I, there's, there's a few, um so Katie has put in her. Her appointment request, I know that Whitney has as well, and then she said there might be one other person that wanted to do it. At leaving still another vacancy on the board, so she has been in contact or said she was going to be in contact with them. Cause it was kinda like, well, you're meeting and there's already a position.
Yeah, but I, I heard there was meetings going on, and I figured the current members should be notified if any discussions are being made.
Yes.
So the meetings were really, Todd, trying to understand special events, and then um Whitney's. Uh mentioned it previously, trying to start an online newspaper, so he was talking to them about. Just trying to get that background information for his recommendation for the, it wasn't really Economic Development Committee meeting, although they both became immediately interested and wanted to join.
Well, it's good they're interested, but I think if there's much discussion, there's, the current member should be involved in that also.
Yes, and we wanted to make sure, and I did, you know, specifically say that, that there are other members, and like he said, it was not anything, it was just discussion, and then they said, well, hey, there's vacancies. And that's where that's coming about, um so Katie does wanna be appointed to that board, she is the first one. Um like I said, Whitney's came in late, so you know, I advise that we would be pushing that off to the next meeting, and she is aware. Um and then also, uh Kayla Larson Dubois, Dub- Dubois, I don't. Okay, so I'm not, yeah, okay, so she wants to be appointed to the Hubbardson Conservation Commission, that is, I believe, Tom Larson's daughter.
Yes.
Um so she wants to be on there and she has an extensive background for that, so those are the two for this week.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the appointments as uh presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we've got committee updates, uh the first we have on there's the QEMP task force. Well, we talked about it a little bit, but we had the 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 meeting on last Thursday at New Brain Tree. Uh which was the next step in the, which would be the third step in the school closure process. Um back in June, I think, the the first step was when the school committee voted to set the wheels in motion to close New Brain Tree and move all the students. To Ocam, uh currently there's only two or three classes in New Brain Tree, and next year projected just to be two classes in the entire building. Anyway, so that that was their reasoning, that was much, much discussion, so um. Month or so ago, maybe, maybe a little bit longer, we had the second step, which was the joint boards meeting, that was held at Quabin. Um at, this is the third one, this is, that was a joint board meeting, this was a public hearing. Where the public was invited and um the 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 select board in New Brain Tree requested it being done in their own town. You know, across the street from their school, so that people had to sort of deal with that reality right there, so. Um that was, that was step three, step four uh will be, um now that step three is done, step four is. It will go back to a vote to the school committee to sort of revote again, whether or not they wanna proceed with the next step in the regional agreement, if they do. Then the town uh per regional agreement has three to six months. Um this is all important to know, because you never know what's gonna happen around here in the, however many years. But um within three to six months, they they have to have a singular um uh topic town meeting. Relative to voting whether or not to close their school, so there's lots of discussion, there was yelling, there was talking out of turn, it was, you know, uh all the stuff that you can imagine. Would happen at at an emotional meeting like this, and it really just comes down to, I mean, my impression, you guys chime in, and most of us are there anyway. Is that uh people just don't want to put their school closed, they don't really care, um you know, that there's only a couple classrooms, they they. Feel as though maybe that the district didn't work hard enough to try to make their school the one that was gonna have, it's the newest school, they use that, they said that a few times. It's the newest school, you know, why are we closing this one, so, you know, and it, I spoke a couple times, cause I was on the task force for so long. And, cause so many of the questions for people who are who are just plugging in now, right, who are saying, why can't we do this, why didn't you look into this, you know, all that. Which we did, looked into a lot of that stuff over four years, right, we'd had all of those discussions, but um you know, the district. They didn't really wanna necessarily hear from the district, right, they don't, they don't necessarily trust the district at the moment, cause the district is voting to close their school.
That was the biggest thing, there's, there's not a lot of trust between the school and the towns.
Correct.
Another stumbling block, which I. I felt that a lot of the people misunderstood it, was that we, this is a procedure that they had to go through. The agreement as written with them does not permit Quabin to be able to lease it out the way we are. And until that agreement can be rewritten, this procedure has to be followed and the, and to uh to take it one step further. It would have to vote to close the school. And then they would have to then sit down and come up with a new agreement. But the um it did, they did make the point that at any time in the procedure, it can stop. Anytime, all they have to do is, the the town has the, that power to do it. And what came out of that was a recommendation that the uh, and I think we mentioned this earlier tonight. That their selectmen sit down with Quabin and come, try to come up with a new.
And they're already doing that.
A new agreement that they can then, of the leasing, if you will.
With the students still in there.
Which, yeah, so they can then present to the town as an option, because a lot of the people in the town weren't understanding that aspect, they said, what are the options, et cetera. Well, right now, there are no options, because it, the legalese has tied your hands.
Yeah, I think they would sublease it, s- um or, you know, sublease the school to another educational program. But all the kids would still go to Ocam, and then that way, the district would still maintain the building.
Cause the bottom line is, means, was obvious to me anyway, is that when it does come to a town vote, at least based on the people that were there, it's not gonna pass. And you can understand that.
Yeah, and so part of, you know, a lot of the meetings I've been at over the years, one, sort of, and this came up then as well, is. Uh you know, there's plenty of people came up with micro- microphone and said, you, you, y'all know we're gonna vote no, right, you know, is that was the sort of feel. Is that um, you know, all the other towns, uh okay, who's next, that came up, okay, who we're gonna try next, that's the sort of thing, so everyone's on guard. Uh that, you know, the potential is there, and since the discussions of, you know, the fact that all five towns could fit in two schools. And that was one of the options the Collins Center looked at, and would that be Quabin North and Quabin South, and which would the two, Quabin North Elementary School and Quabin South Elementary School? And which towns would have, and how's those, so all, you know, those are, those are the sorts of things that, it's, it it sort of spirals. And the the s- school committee, uh uh I don't think that successfully, tried to say, look, it was almost like, you know, Belichick, right, we're on to the Chiefs. It was like, we're here to just talk about New Brain Tree tonight, and you can't really do that, you can't just quell all other conversations. Uh just because you wanna uh sort of get through your checkbox of step three of the school closure pros- uh processes, just to, to emotional of a decision. So anyway, I guess we'll just uh keep, keep uh, keep an eye on it here and we'll keep updating.
And Dan, if it did go to a vote, you you don't know how people are gonna vote, people at that meeting. Uh were probably uh against closing the school, but you don't know how the rest of the town is gonna vote, you know, there was a lot of people that weren't there at that meeting that. We don't know what uh, how they would vote.
It's true, and and when it did come out, which is, this is, I didn't know this either, uh 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 a lot of the discussion, um. You know, centered around the fact that, you know, once the schools, there's no longer kids in the school, you know, who pays for repairs, like there's gonna need a new roof and all that sort of stuff. And so that's when the town came up, but we found out on Thursday, that the, if they do close the school and take the kids out. The school is still on the hook for the. Two thousand twenty-five, cause that's the the period of the lease, so there is seven years, six, seven years, where they. Many, many, many options could be vetted though, as well, many, many options could be vetted while s- the town is not paying for maintenance or repairs of the building, so. You know, I, I don't know, I don't know, so it's um, it's a tricky one. Alright, well, that's, that's the QAMP task force update, Town Center Committee, no, no further update, we uh, we're just waiting for our. I did have correspondence with you on that, I think, with Mass DOT, the other day, about this, the, our engineer. Uh looking for comments on the extended twenty-five percent design, which is what kicked us up past our, up to the the rec field with the, the full-on. Town center reconstruction work, so that's, I'll just continue to update. Okay, um any matters that have come up tonight that?
I did have one, so uh tonight we hosted, and a lot of you were there, but the volunteer appreciation night, so we had. Uh pretty good turnout of people who, at the senior center, that's why I'm putting over there, of volunteers who help our town uh grow, so. We gave them a pine tree that they can grow, and and thanks to the town, it has the the town seal on it. And we also went around the room and had everybody introduce themselves, why they got involved, what they do. Uh I learned a lot about uh residents who give their time, and uh it was just a nice event, Lori uh worked like crazy to not only get people there. But to make sure uh it was nice and that the event was meaningful, um so I do appreciate that. But just in general, it's nice to work in a town where um volunteerism is appreciated and used. Cause without our volunteers, without uh people who do this for free, uh the town wouldn't run.
And I gotta say, since you started, since you guys really started, your side of the team, we're better than we were. There's no question, as far as about filling positions and all that sort of thing, so, you know, it's on the right track, I think, uh it's, you know, not completely full everywhere, but. To me, it's, it's better than it was, so, that's great.
They were very grateful, you know, everybody was grateful, and and they liked their position, and you know, we, we did thank them a bunch of times, so, and and. We said if there's other people that wanna fill boards and committees, and we've had a few, I mean, as you've seen, we've had a lot of appointment slips come up, I mean, there's still openings. Um you know, once you open one door to one committee, you know, by the time you're done, you're on two or three, you know, so that kind of is an easy way to fill the, fill the roles, so you know.
We got a couple of fresh meat right there.
Cindy, who if you remember, we pointed her to the Ware River watershed, uh just the passion she had about that, you know, and it's not a position you hear about a lot. Because it's a regional thing, but, well, she really cares about that, and we picked the right person, it was just nice to hear her story, why she cares about that, why she got involved, so. They all were cool, but that one stuck out in my mind, is, it's just interesting to hear why people do what they do.
Excuse me, at the end, uh for the benefit of you who weren't here, at the end, Donnie got up and spoke. And I think an interesting point to, just to make and pass on to the town, he said of all the towns in his uh district, the eleven. He said, we're the only town that does this, and he was really praising it and thinking, thinking. And he was really praising it and thinking, thinking it was quite nice and so forth, but no other, he said, no other town does this. He said, people might get the letters occasionally, but to actually do this, he was very impressed with it, so. I think that's kudos to everybody, yeah.
Um, so I guess, again, matters not reasonably anticipated, didn't necessarily know Francois was gonna be here, but wanna give us an update on you?
As of last week, uh, the Chair of the Planning Board has officially recognized that the town council's, I guess, that the town council's uh opinion uh does matter. And uh recognizes that the process that was uh followed by the select board was indeed the correct one. And so therefore, I do consider myself at this point, the associate member of the planning board. And thanks to Ed who raised the issue at the very end, had it not been for him, I think we would still probably be in limbo.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks guys, thanks for sticking with it too.
The board for uh moving forward with getting that uh, getting that opinion from the town council.
And I personally wanna thank Francois for hanging in there, because I backed him from the beginning and he just still hung in there.
If you could share me the, the cost of, of what that opinion was.
I forgot your request. There was a hundred percent chance that question was coming. Okay, any other matters uh not reasonably anticipated?
One thing that came up at the planning board, which uh, um, piqued my interest was in August, the planning board voted themselves to be the Affordable Housing Committee. And we looked back and did some research on it and uh found out the committee was originally started by the Zoning Board of Appeals when, when we, um, I was the chair at the time. When, when we were looking at possibly facing chapter forty B uh plans coming to the board. And the board was structured and made up with uh, uh, one from the planning board, I think one from the select board, one from the Z B A. And, and some outside people, Donna Warfield from real estate and that. And uh, I just would like to see if you would uh, take a, take another look at that and see if the structure of that board should be a, a total planning board or maybe some outside people and some outside members.
How long ago was that, Ed, that it was a group like that? You said you looked back, I was wondering how, how long?
It was started, I think, in around two thousand seven. Uh, around in the.
So if I may add something to that, the last report that was submitted to the state, which was in two thousand sixteen, is a report that actually is authored in two thousand ten by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And uh, I think it's like every seven years or s- i- i- and it's, it's a, it's a periodic timeframe that the report has to go up. But the last report was indeed uh presented to the state of Massachusetts, to, to, to the state. Uh, and it does clearly indicate was, that it was the zoning board of, board of appeals. Uh, and I think that's the, that's the part that you are at this point in time presenting. Uh, not just the fact that this report was from two thousand ten, but it was the one that was reported in two thousand sixteen uh to the state of Massachusetts.
And, and since then, the planning board has uh done some consultant work. Um, for, I don't know, a, a period of about a year and, and they're looking at updating the uh, the affordable housing plan. I, and I, I guess we have to file from two thousand sixteen forward. Or come up with a new plan now, anyway.
The last point I wanted to make is, is that there is genuine interest in, you know, members of the planning board to assist in that area, myself included as well as, as is Alice. So, I mean, I think there's, there's capacity within members of the planning board who want to participate in it. But I think to Ed's point, just gotta make sure that this is structured the right way, under the right uh auspices. Meaning under, un- un- under the right board. Wanna make sure that, going forward, that that is done correctly.
Okay. Um, alright, so is that part of discussion about the master plan or just in general?
No, it's separate from the master. Yeah, it's, it's not part of the master plan.
Cause that is a chapter, but.
So what would be, what would be the next step then if uh, I'm assume, are you saying that it should go back to the Zone of Appeal?
No, not necessarily. Anyone who wants to.
Sounds to me like it's more of are you aware of and.
Yeah, and is it in the right place?
You know, if you've got, if you've got a group of people that, that wanna do.
Wanna run with it, yeah.
Wanna run with it. But the, the board could be expanded so that there's other people from the outside, so that you get, you know, uh, some more input on how you might increase your, your affordable housing. And that, but this is something I, I guess we really need to do to get current with the state.
Francois, can you bring that up to your next meeting then, maybe? Uh, and just sort of take the temperature of, of.
We did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes, and that was indeed brought up. And uh, I think the, the point that Chair at that point in time uh presented was, is that it was under the planning board. And I think the, 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 the question still is, is how did it, how did it change from the zoning board of appeals to the planning board? What were the steps to move it from one to the other? I'm not suggesting that it was not done properly and correctly, it's just that there's no, I guess there's no record to, to that effect. And understanding what that process was is what is, what we're trying to determine. So in order to make sure that if a committee is formed, that it is formed under the right structure. And, and that we don't run into trouble afterwards with that.
I wonder if, I wonder if it's simply a matter of the, the members who were a member at the time were also on the planning board and then it just kind of, yeah.
Well, I don't know how, how I trickle down that path, but when I look at what the planning board has to do with the master plan and all of the other things that they're involved with.
True.
And then you look at the uh, the zoning board of appeals only meets when, when there is a zoning issue or variance to be granted or something like that. So I mean, we've, we've had years where we didn't even have any meetings at all. And you might have two or three a year. So I don't know what appetite that board would have to helping in that, inferior or not. But doesn't make any difference as long as we get the report in.
Yeah, and there is genuine interest to uh, to participate in this year.
Is there also interest expressed to expand the board?
Well, I think at this point, I think at this point in time, Alice LeTol is in charge to uh, work on this year. And so she reached out to me, asked me if I would be interested, which I am. Um, I think she is interested in finding out who else uh worked on the original report and see if they are interested in participating.
Outside of the planning board?
Definitely, I think that would uh, be, be considered. But it's again, it's, when a report comes out, ultimately will have to be approved by a, a board. Uh, and, and so the question is, is what board should this, this fall under? And that's really, it's, it's a technicality, but I think it's an important one to understand.
Yeah, no, I agree.
If there's outside expertise that's needed, uh, the planning board took in monies from two developers. Um, so they wavered them having to build affordable housing on their projects. One Madison Green and the other one Moose Horn Estates. And I think it was five thousand dollars per unit. They wavered that and that money came to the planning board. And we're trying to find out where all of that, what account all of that is in right now. Christine is doing some goofy shit on that. But, so we have some outside resources that if we, if we needed to bring someone else, someone in to help uh, bring the report together or regular report, this money's available there.
Okay.
A separate item that I wanted to uh ask the select board. I know that several months ago, there was a uh motion passed, I think, Michael, you, you passed it. Uh, you, 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 you made the motion regarding the taxation of uh, marijuana sales in uh, in, in town. The question that I'm bringing up, is there a similar uh statute that we need to potentially consider with regards to the, not the sale of the end product, but say for example, uh, uh, the commercial growers who then, from an industrial perspective, uh, can, you know, do something with that? And I'm just exploring this here, I'm just asking that question and if that is certainly something that needs to be uh evaluated and considered.
So my, my recollection and, and this may be a very, very bad recollection is.
I'm glad you're speaking.
Is that the, the tax is, was only valid for sales of marijuana. I think the motion that we passed was to a tax up to the available.
Maximum.
Maximum limit levied by, allowed by the state legislature. But I believe, I believe that the growing of it falls under agricultural use. So there's, you can't levy specific taxes on marijuana growing particular, but I, I'm not positive on that. That was, I do have a faint recollection of that.
It's like seventeen percent, I think, the maximum tax.
So, no, th- this was an additional, additional tax that we could, we could levy. And I think it's currently up to three percent? Three percent, but we, we left it open.
Twenty percent.
Yeah. So you, you could tax, like, if it's in buildings and you can tax the, the, the building and stuff, all the, the improvements. But I don't think you can specifically tax the marijuana that's being grown. But I'm, I'm not positive on it.
Can we bring this article for town meeting, cause it is on the, the list, we'll definitely explore those options. But it, it's the post-community agreement where you can get those added benefits for the town on the, on the commercial industrial side, as far as I understand it. The local option is three percent.
Anybody been to the store yet?
The towns that are doing it though, have been taking in money like. In a matter of weeks, they've been taking in millions of dollars, you know? Gardeners hasn't opened yet.
Oh, there's one coming, Gardner.
Have you seen next to Friendly's Sanctuary? It used to be the eight. Says Sanctuary, it hasn't opened yet, but I just found out it, that's what, where it's gonna be. And there's enough traffic there to begin with. I can't imagine when they open up.
There is a four hundred forty thousand dollars a day in revenue.
Oh, he's seen his number signs in his head.
In all, all districts, not just commercial, residential, town center, everywhere.
Well, to this discussion, remember the individual who came before us? He, his, his mother, town property wants to do this. I wonder whatever happened to that.
I forwarded the information to Ryan.
But he's still interested, because he, you know, got, really got jumped on that night.
Alright, uh, any, that, that was, we're, we're sideways there. Any additional matters um not reasonably anticipated from anybody here? How about uh, public press question and answer? Anybody else wanna, anything else out there?
I have one question on, on the CPA funds and whether, I had heard that there, there has to be a separation of church and state. And because of that, the CPA might not be able to do any more projects with religious organizations.
Oh, CPC?
Yeah, so it has to do with, uh, after our town meeting, the state issued guidance, um, that says you cannot borrow money for a church project. So the money that was given to the, to the church tonight through the grant was money that was in cash and that was fine. But yeah, you cannot borrow anything for a church project.
But, but you can still do religious organizations travel.
Right, as long as you're not borrowing.
There's, there's two, two add-ons there. So it's not illegal to borrow, it's that Bond Council won't support it, which I know is a small distinction. But if, if you did call them, they said it can be done, but there's no council right now that's saying that they'll okay it, which means you can't do it. It's a small caveat, but it's.
That's important.
And then also, you can't, there is a separation of church and state, so you can't just give money to the church. It has to be, um, it has to be for not church functions. So the reason why uh this project is okay under the, the current guidance is because it's for the preservation of a historic building in Hubbardson that houses the town clock. So the grant agreement that we signed says this money is for historic preservation purposes, not, not to support the operations of, of a church. To keep that separation of church and state. So if you had a church apply just to say, we need, we need help for our church, that's still not allowed.
So then the other, the other application that was done at town meeting by the other church in town that looks so poorly. Um, is that, is it possible to do that? I mean, that's a building.
That didn't, that didn't pass?
I know it didn't pass, but.
I don't wanna sound like a lawyer, but it really is case by case. So they would have to present, um, the CPC would have to be in support of it and then council would review it for for its historic purposes, if they went that route or any of the other categories of CPC. It really is case by case.
Don, ironically, Ed, Bond, the council for, came, KP Law, reviewed our warrant and okayed everything and said that the borrowing and everything else was great. After our town meeting, that same attorney left KP Law and went and worked for the state and then issued this, a different ruling against our borrowing. That wa- was not, it was not okay.
I guess the last thing I have, I'd like to thank the select board and the administration of the town for a really great year of management. And uh, you know, it's been a pretty solid year and you guys have done a great job and wish you all Merry Christmas.
Okay, yeah, this is our last, uh, our last meeting of the year, right?
Happy holidays to everybody, happy holidays.
You can do another one.
No other public press?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at uh seven fifty-six.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.